Okay, we're going to call this meeting the order of everybody who's in this meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did anybody sign with yourself?
Yes, sir, I am.
No.
Yes, one. What did you say, sir? I do, I do on my other phone. Let me, uh, let me call you from my work phone. Okay, yes, sir.
Lori Duncan?
Yes, she's here.
Rusty. Okay, go ahead.
Can you call in?
Oh, I don't have to.
I'll call, I'll call on this.
Want me to give it up?
Yeah, go ahead. All right. My name is Rusty Duncan. I'm the owner of the Duncan Martial Arts up the road here. January fourteenth, I believe it's a Saturday, we are going to be having about thirty, thirty-four Koreans coming into town. And it's youth Marines, the martial arts organization, along with some very high-ranking masters. And we're going to be, uh, we're going to be having a day here in Stockton. The EDC is also involved. They're planning on taking them to a ranch in the morning, let them do some horseback riding, have us follow with them, and then we plan on doing a bunch of shows at the city park and feed them and so on. They're requesting that a city official is there to accept a thank you award for letting, inviting them into town. It's a plaque. They, they do it everywhere they go. So my request is, uh, I think it would be kind of neat if we could make an unofficial certificate or something in their name, making like a citizen of Stockton type, just nothing, like a memory book to take home, nothing official, just something fun for them to take back to their career. So I just wanted to kind of let y'all know that that's kind of happening. EDC is involved in this as well. And we'd like to have a city official there to accept this award, tell, you know, it's pretty neat. I thank you for all, um, and for us as well.
What time?
Uh, we're going to be doing it right around lunchtime at City Park.
And the date is?
I believe it's January fourteenth, I'm not mistaken, Saturday.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
So January fourteenth.
Hey, well, I'll try to be there. And if you can get with Tanya, and maybe she could print up something to give to her, how will that be?
That'd be awesome.
And otherwise, you could give her the name of the people or whatever.
We already have the names and, uh, that'd be really, really sweet for them to take back with them.
Okay.
So we appreciate it. If anybody else wants to see the document, it'd be awesome also. All right, thank you for your time.
Remember my presentation of the two thousand twenty-three FELTS operating capital budget.
Good evening. It's my first time to give a budget presentation. I don't know, uh, what the format's been in the past, but I'll, uh, go over some highlights of how we developed it and, uh, and I can do it every turn. I'm just going to talk about it a little bit. Wanted to bring y'all up to speed on how we developed our budget this year. It's a, it's a pretty thorough process. Our, our, our area has grown fast, well, fast, two and a half percent, uh, every year. But with that, we have new growth, new customers. So our, our budget's always got, uh, a lot of pressure on it to grow, and we can do a good job by keeping it flat year over year. The other thing that impacts our budget this year is our material vendors. Thirty-seven percent increase in all the materials, you know, that we buy, you know, keep the lights on, the poles and the wires and all that. That's really, you know, really impactful to our business. Also lead times on some of our key, uh, key equipment have gone from three months to eighteen months. You know, we get our transformers hanging on the poles to serve new, new customers. So a lot of pressure on, on the business to stay up with that, but we've, uh, put together what we think is a, a, a really good, you know, the prudent fire report a few weeks ago or a month ago, uh, flat budget year over year, which I'm pretty proud of. Our, our increases are in the capital side. Uh, we have, we do have aging assets. A lot of our poles and wires and transformers are getting up there in years. So, uh, we've got, uh, the need to change them out. So we make sure we don't have a lot of long outages. So you'll see that in there as well. So I, uh, I'll look through it. Uh, what, what's the process? Do you guys want me to go through this page by page? Or do you want to ask questions on certain pages or matter what, what would you like me to do?
Okay, I need to ask some questions. So let's just get it out of the way.
Okay.
Insurance under general administration, is that the employee's insurance, right? It's like, it's the first thing to. It's like. It went from two hundred and five thousand to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, two, uh, yes, that is. It's down to one ninety-two and then five hundred and two sixteen.
Okay, because are you still offering family insurance?
Yep.
And so when you offer family insurance for everybody's family, how many extra people got on?
Three or four, I believe.
Okay, and do those people get a ten ninety-nine? I mean, it is a benefit and it's not payroll.
No, I mean, everybody gets, I mean, everybody that's on our health plan.
That's right. They get it. I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about the family plan people. If you get on family plan, it's felt going to give them a ten ninety-nine.
No, we're not required to.
And can you show me that law? That says you're not required to.
I don't know. I've never been to the company that required a ten ninety-nine when you had family on your medical insurance.
If you're paying for it. Now, they can have family on it if they pay for it, and they're not required a ten ninety-nine.
Well, they're not getting it free. They pay for a portion. We pay for a portion.
Okay, whatever you're paying for the family, do you give that portion of the people a ten ninety-nine?
No.
Okay, and what is your line? What is their deductible?
Uh, let's see, uh, no, I'll just say my insurance program, we, we just did this three or four months ago. Thirty-five hundred or five thousand. It's a high deductible plan. I don't remember what it is. It did not cost the company that much to provide insurance.
Okay, so it's a five thousand dollars deductible and then eighty-twenty after that?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I've got no problem with that.
It's very competitive with the market.
Okay, then I was told that true or false that, and the reason this budget's going to be so important is that during the year last year, you said, I got some extra money because we budgeted some positions and we didn't fulfill them. And so since I got this extra money, I'm just going to give everybody a raise. Are those people that you gave a raise to, do you give them another raise three or four months later?
Well, number one, it's incorrect. Going to say what really occurs is we budget every year a merit increase and a bonus for employees, and that's what we did this year. No different than we've always done.
So you didn't give them a raise like in September or anything? August, September, or anything like that?
Just like they did every year, yes, sir. And it was in the budget.
And when you say in the budget, was that like other people's salary that wasn't used that you just said?
No, no, there's a budget item for merit increase.
Okay. And then now they get, so whatever we approved now, it won't want to take till September, is that correct?
The merit increases.
The merit increase and all that, you're not going to give it to them now. You'll just wait till September or something? Is that what you're saying?
The merit increases are effective in the next payroll. It's not like next week. They'll get their, their first paycheck next week.
So they didn't get it last year then?
They didn't. It was the first year in.
I mean, they didn't get it January the first then?
No, no.
Okay, so they had to wait. It was in the budget last year and they didn't get it till?
So every year we have a cost of living increase and a merit increase and a bonus in the budget. And that's what happened this year, just like every other year, except for last year, when I wasn't here and they had some turmoil over management. Do you know about that?
Yeah, okay, so you just gave them what they didn't want to get, okay? Now, the only other question I got is, at the city, how did they get there? How did you calculate what we're going to get?
Yeah, let's go back to that page. We'll go back to, we'll go back to page ten.
Okay. Got it.
So based on the system agreement, um, it's a percentage of the revenue like our sales every year. And so, uh, the city of Floridville gets, you know, of that percentage, just puts a breakdown.
Okay, so when you say up to three percent of electric cell revenue of prior year. Okay, so it's just strictly revenue?
That's right.
And so how much are you budgeting to sell? Uh, let's see, purchase power, what is the, the?
Oh, you want to, well, it's based on this year. So it's really, and I don't have a forecast. It's how we end the end of the year this year.
Right, but I mean, we can get an idea, me and you. What is, what do you think the sales is going to be?
Uh, well, we can probably back into it. The math is right there. It's, it's a million dollars. So it's, that's three percent.
Yeah, but I want to see the figure that you're using for sales. So I can take the sales kind of point oh three. That's what I'm looking for. Yeah, I look at purchase, transmission, distribution, customer count, meter reading. I don't see nothing there.
So if you look at page two.
Six, it's land, bro. No, I don't see that.
If you look at page two, you can see the purchase power.
Got that.
About thirty-six million. Three percent of that is roughly a million.
No, that's purchase power. We're talking about sales. There is a difference between purchase, what you bought it for and what you sold it for.
Yes. Well, we. It's, it's going to be close to that. That's why the numbers are almost exactly the same.
Hmm, I don't think. Because we understood it when you, you buy it at this rate and you put your operating expenses on top of it to get your money back. And I can imagine that, because this is just, because it, I mean, you're budgeting, what, total thirty-eight million dollars?
Yeah, including the purchase power.
And that's just expenses?
Thirty-eight million dollars is not our expenses. Our, our expenses are the total excluding purchase power, the next to the bottom line.
So we're looking at seventy million?
Seven point two million, yes.
So if you take seven point two and, yeah, no, so.
But that's not the revenue.
That would be, right, if you took seven point two times three percent, that'd be like two million dollars that would come to, to be divided up.
Right, I'll have to, I'm not fair. Marty unfortunately said she just got that right out and I just don't know.
No, I don't want nothing spit out. I want to see numbers.
Did she tell you the numbers?
No, no, you didn't hear me. Let's get this back. I want to see the actual number. I don't want nobody to tell me anything. I want to see it, okay? Because I'm looking at that being about what you just said, seventy million dollars and at three percent.
It's really seven million, but yes. Seven point two million.
Well, it's thirty-one million for purchases of power. And then thirty-nine million for everything else, right? That's what you told me? I thought that's what you said. When I put them together, you told me no. So I'm just trying, I just, I just wanted to see.
This year's projections of purchase power, so it's thirty-six million, yes.
Yeah.
And then we were talking about what we spent outside of the purchase power. He's, uh, the second one. So this year we're going to spend six point eight million dollars, six point nine.
So if you could, you know, like, when we get to January, you could bring in the total sales revenue? And then we could, I could do the number from there, three percent of that. How is that?
We're going to.
Okay. Okay, and other than that, does anybody else have any questions? That's the only thing I want to do is to see. And, and did you raise the rate?
We did not raise our rate. We, we, uh, increased what's called the GMT factor this year for the fuel. The cost of fuel if we purchase natural gases, you know, like went from three dollars to eight dollars. So we did increase the GMT. So everybody's rates did go up, but not FELTS increase.
Okay, now, because I keep up with natural gas.
Yep.
And my man over here does too. It is now about five dollars.
That's right.
So are you going to reduce that GMT?
Well, we're playing catch-up because we're behind. And as soon as we get caught up, we'll go back to where we were yesterday. Because it's just passed the rule to make profit.
Okay, but what I'm saying is you can increase the GMT.
Because we don't want to pay too much. We were buying eight-dollar gas, but our rates were, they designed for three-dollar gas, and we got behind. So now we're going to, as soon as we get caught up, we get to go back to where we were.
Okay.
But I don't know if you do manage that. Would that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. I just want to, I just want to be able, because everybody in the city of Stockton has to pay electric bill.
Of course.
And so they're all curious about what the rate's going to do. And so I just want to get that out there to them. So, okay? Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve their operating capital budget? Oh, it's just presentation, so we don't. Okay, number six, consideration and adoption of resolution number two-three-one-two-oh-six-two-two. That is so far by the city council, city of Stockton relating to the issuance of the sale of the city of Stockton Texas Electric Light and Power System Improvement Revenue Bond Series two-oh-two-two and other matters in connection therein. And just to give an update, I talked to the city manager of Floridville. He said that you and y'all had worked out some differences. And the city of Floridville had approved it. I didn't, I was a little bit worried about trying to approve something before they did. So go ahead.
All right, so we sent copies of the resolution to you guys. I didn't bring copies.
No, but I gave them one.
Oh, they saw one? Okay, I thought in case you had to see it first.
I mean, do we need to sign something?
Didn't waste the signature stuff there, but.
Okay.
Or do you need, do you have the motion language too? I was going to talk.
Well, no, go ahead and talk to them about it now.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, I brought, brought my help here. We're all in the gash with suits, um, RBC.
One of them didn't work out. That's for you, right? That's for you.
Anyway, yeah, so we've got, uh, council and, uh, RBC captain Mark is here. Uh, North Rose Council, uh, helped us with this, uh, bond sale. Uh, it has been approved by the city of Floridville. Uh, we're going to want to go to, we're going to sell these bonds, uh, hopefully before the end of the year. We're, 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 we're trying to get there. But I've been making, I made, I organized over the both, and I want to come by here because we need a resolution to support from you guys on what's going to be the bonds, and that's our capital program. So, uh, I've got the motion language here. If somebody wants to make a motion, but it's up to y'all. The lawyers provided us that too.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the city council adopted a resolution related to the issuance and sale of the city of Floridville Texas Electric Light and Power System Revenue Bond Series two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have a second? We have a second, I guess, from the end. So we have a motion, but that's, so, second by councilman, Neilan, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks so much.
Okay? And in January, just bring you a figure and we'll be good to go. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Number seven, discussing an action to approve minutes of meeting out November the first of two thousand and twenty-three. We have an offer by councilman Neilan, second by councilman. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number eight, announcing place, terms, and filing dates for the two thousand twenty-three city general election.
Our upcoming general election will be Saturday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Places coming up are for the mayor, city council, member districts one and two for two-year term. Your filing dates begin on Wednesday, January eighteenth and end on Friday, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, five p.m.
You say this is the line too?
Yes.
Sal and Jim.
Yep.
Number nine, consider and discuss the possible action concerning award of administrative service contract for the preparation of the city's two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Texas community development plot grant application and subsequent administrative service contract if funded. They, we just had one bidder, is that correct, Tony?
Yeah, one bidder that was Langford and, uh, they were dealing with that for a living, so, and this is for management services.
Right, and they, that's the people we've used for all of our grants and stuff.
Banks?
Yes.
Hey, you want to explain what that grant is going to be for?
Now, it is basically application, uh, as we, every twenty-four month cycle that we re, uh, reapply and get a name and add to growing competition, uh, we have one grant that we're going to be funding here in January, uh, for a wastewater project. Basically, that's what we'll try to be using this grant application for to extend and to continue that eight to ten-year plan that we have for wastewater or whatever. The only difference is, uh, in this grant application, it's a half a million dollars with a fifty, fifty, I believe, fifty thousand dollar match, where those were three hundred and seventy-five, thirty-seven thousand dollar match. And it did state in there that we could, uh, use part of the funds for, uh, asphalt screen maintenance and, and, and after the construction and stuff like that. So it's a procedure that we go to your manual applications for these, uh, community water rates.
Okay, case, the sewer pipes, we're thinking that we need to remove some of them when we're trying to get a grant to remove that of the sewer pipes throughout the city. And that's what the district.
Mostly this project, the water we're going to be starting, we'll start there on Jackson Street where the parking lot of, uh, the splash pad is and continue it. It will go down, uh, Jackson Street, the housing project, to the corner of Sixth Street where the Sonic Light is coming up in there and then down the back of, uh, uh, Germania, PoliMe Insurance. We have a, a right of way that goes that way and, uh, working, that is one of the main truck lines, uh, out of the city. And it's a ten-inch clay pipe that is, and that is in service since the sewer system was put in, uh, system. And we're going to be taking it from a ten-inch clay pipe to a fifteen-inch plastic, or C nine, I don't know, plastic pipe. So, uh, any of those services, uh, is what we're working on, okay?
And we need a motion to?
Yes, to award, um.
To award the administrative services to Langford? Do we have a motion? Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by councilman Boskis, second by councilman Soden, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number ten, discuss an action to amend section two of ordinance number three-eight-one-dash-one-one-oh-five-one-four-dash-one-two to include Main Street.
That is for the truck traffic that we've had been able to, the sonage is already there, the orders being taken care of that. More of the island that we need that to, and this is because we did not miss all Main Street and alternative routes. And this is going to take care of that.
So it's a, it's the, put an eternity route so big trucks don't, through traffic can't come through Main Street. Is that correct?
Through truck traffic will be renewed to our eighty-seven topics, yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve section two of ordinance number three-eight-one-one-one-oh-five-one-four-dash-one-two? And, and to include Main Street, I'm, we have a motion by councilman Neilan.
Second.
Second by councilman Soden, all in favor? Motion passes. City marshal report.
Uh, last month we had a hundred and forty-five hours. We only had one call outside of the city and about three, I don't know, I guess three arrests.
You had, any questions for the city marshal?
And as far as any questions on the vehicle?
Yeah, go ahead, wait a minute. Hold on, Ben. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Chief. Go ahead, Banks.
Have John, he called you, he's got us about a leak vehicle?
That's what I was just fixing to do. That's what I was just about to do.
Ah, excuse me, I didn't know you were.
Okay, uh, the F-one-fifty that we get ordered, we have no, no clue. So, uh, Banks and I talked, we went ahead and canceled the order. There's a, uh, a twenty-eighteen Explorer of the copper scope that is fully outfitted that a constable is getting rid of. It's only got fifty thousand miles on it and we can pick that up. I got him down to twenty-five-five.
And so two thousand fourteen?
No, no, one of, no, the, the one of the copper scope.
Oh, this is something, oh, okay, two thousand eighteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, tell them about the two thousand.
Yeah, and I, I got a vehicle donated to us from Bear County, it was a twenty-fourteen Explorer. Came to us fully loaded, uh, getting decals, uh, I don't know, did you get the email about the HOG nine?
Yes, but I'll sell this, yeah, I'll pack it, but I won't.
So we're getting, we're getting that decal. We're going to get the, uh, copper decal. And then if we, if we move forward with this black expedition, it's going to, it's fully outfitted with everything, uh, uh, we'll put ghost tracks on that.
And I'm sorry, can't you, obviously, it was for twenty-five-five?
Twenty-five-five.
And the order, the order for the one that was being ordered, how much was that?
Thirty...
Almost forty.
I want to say almost forty thousand, and that would look out any, we would have had to add emergency equipment and all that stuff. So this is a, this is a good save. Yeah, yeah, and, and it's only fifty thousand miles on it, and that's, that's going to last us, that's going to last us quite a long.
Yes, sir.
So Banks, do we need to do like a motion to get rid of the one or what do we need to do?
We want to cancel the order.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I did, I did feel that the council needs to, uh, take the recommendation of the city marshal and move apart it and connect the rest.
Okay, since we don't have anything on the agenda to do that, we'll just do it and then, since we do have it in a motion to buy one, it's already there.
The money was put set aside.
Right, so we already did that. So we'll just do that, then it just won't be as much.
Uh, perfect.
Okay? Any questions for the city marshal? Okay, fire chief report.
So, uh, last month inside city limits, we had six calls, G M B A's, two electrical fires, uh, one stretch of fire and one public assist, uh, here in town. A couple of things have been brought up to me. I'm pretty sure you guys are aware about this silver farm, they go to school and everything else.
Isn't that outside the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, let's forget that then.
But it, but it includes our fire station too, that is part of the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with city limits.
But the fire station number two, it is part of the city. Am I right? That's a city building.
It's in a property.
Okay, so go ahead.
So questions have been coming up to see if we are trying to get prepared or are we being prepared to be able to do something if and when all this happens? Again, President's been asking about the fire station two, is it going to become something or not? I know I brought it up, uh, beginning of.
And what does the county have to say about that, since it is an county?
I can.
Fire station two is in the county, correct?
Fire station two.
I mean, I know you're saying that it's city of Stockdale Fire Station, but it will be there to service the county residents that live in that area.
As well as all the equipment in the city, equipment that's going to be over there. So where, where's the line, where's, where's?
And I'm asking you, what does the county have to say about helping you to do this?
So here, here's, here's my deal, as the county hasn't even given us money for this year, which should've been paid out in October. We ran into this same problem last year. We were supposed to have people go to Commissioner's Court and try to figure things out, but nobody from here ended up showing up. So, you are asking me to do a whole bunch of things here, but I have a full-time job as well, Frank. I get, I get a lot of animosity about being out there, being here, but it all comes out of the city. And you push hard on us about it, hard.
Uh, you're right, because I think the county has a, a fiduciary responsibility.
Then go talk to the county.
I have.
And what, what's your answer? What did they tell you the last time?
Well, but, January the first, one of your.
What did they tell you the last time?
But January the first.
But here's my question, what did they tell you the last time, when you said you already went to the county?
Yeah, they said, here's your money, and I got it, remember? You had a problem last year, I called the judge, and within fifteen days, you had to check, remember? When you came here last year, I called Judge Jackson for you and got you the money. That's what I did. And, I mean, and it was after January, and you brought it up, and I said, well, I'll call him, and I did that for you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, this is, the county really needs to step up. And I know January the first, we're gonna have a new commissioner for precinct four. Correct?
Correct.
And I think, when January the first gets here, we need to get with that commissioner and say, here's our problems for your people out there. What are you gonna do to help us? Not what the city can do, but what can the county do to help Stockdale Fire Department fight the fires of the citizens in that area? Because it's hard for me to say, let's take money out of the city coffers to be prepared to fight fires out on sixteen eighty-one. I'm not against those people, don't, don't nobody get the wrong person. But somewhere, the county needs to take care of their citizens and not the taxpayers within the City of Stockdale.
Okay. Well, going back to station two, um, we've had more vandalism in it, they broke the entire back door, stole all the copper, have pretty much, they, they wrecked a lot of stuff, and they're, good thing was, we cleaned a lot of it, there wasn't too much for them to take, but they're taking some of the things that we huffed in there, we're gonna try to use. Just so you guys know, um, we're gonna try to come up with something, I don't know, we're gonna try to get some kind of solar lights or something, and kind of put some, kind of, of visibility on the doors or something. Um, we're trying to figure it out. It, it's out there in the middle of nowhere, so, you know, it's not very hard for people to go in there. So, we can show that we're, we're out there a little bit more, um, maybe we'll stop, I don't know. I don't know, so, that's what's, that's what's going on with station two, out there in that building. Um, station one here in town, uh, we still have a light switch that's darkening, um, we still don't have any hot water. Um, I talked to Banks a couple of weeks ago about cooling, we, we still, we still can't use that vehicle, I don't know, there's something else, another avenue we can do with that.
Why is the light switch still messed up? Because, he told us that last month.
Mike, hey, Master, an alert check down there, he said he hates it. Uh, there cannot, thank you, he's seen again, and a whole lot had, uh, Chris come back on the warranty or whatever, uh, to take care of a whole lot. Uh, okay, uh, we'll check on it again.
Um, like, and, and all I can ask is, get with Banks on a weekly deal? You know, like, it's not working. All banks, don't admit it working, and so that way, we don't wait a month down the road, and you show up and go. He sends somebody out there, he thinks it's fixed, you come in and say it isn't, and I'm not saying you're wrong, don't, don't get me wrong.
Well, somebody pay for it to be leased?
Yeah, he said.
If, if, if a person's patient, somebody checking on it to see if, or we just give them money and? Okay. Yes, sir.
If he can at least give me a call or send an email, Banks, and let me know when someone's there, that way we can kind of just follow up, and we can try to keep that communication, because I don't know when you send anybody in there.
Okay. Well, it was the week after, uh, that, there's a certain time after we have to leave.
Okay, let's just sort of communicate so we know something.
I know he was, I know Banks is trying to work with, with Ed when he bought the solar deal. Um, and without using that duly, it puts in a bind. Uh, we use it, we utilize it pretty well, and I, I, I don't know what else, whatever avenue we can go, try to do, to try to get this title to him fixed. It, it puts it short.
I, there cannot make multiple calls to A now, and now, there cannot, people made on the list, I'll start that again for the record, you back in the town, man?
Um, I appreciate it. Um, other than that, our toy drive has been very well, um, people have been very giving. Um, we have half our station, or quarter of our station, full of toys. Um, we've gotten together with Lodge, as well as, um, Chamber Commerce, and, uh, we're pretty much all joined together to try to make this happen, and get a little bit bigger than what we usually do. Um, but, uh, we have all of our stuff at all the Dollar Generals, Dollar General here, Dollar General in Laverne, Dollar General in Solid Springs, Dollar General in Seguin. So we've been, we've put the work in to try to get these toys, and people have been donating toys, so, hopefully we'll be able to put some smile on kids' faces this year, again.
Good deal.
Do you all have to land anything for, at the park or our business?
Um, so, Seattle hasn't really mentioned anything about us doing, standing on the truck this year. I don't know what his schedule is, they usually contact me by now, I tried to make contact with him, and I didn't get a response back. I do know that Chamber does have them, so we're probably just gonna go ahead and go with him on the Chamber deal and get him the toys while he's there, he's there for four hours, so he can pass out toys. Uh, we'll get with Lodge, and then, once we get with Lodge, we'll get a list of kids that are in need, and we'll try to, we're separating toys right now per age group, so that way we can do it, and we're, we're trying to keep everything updated on Facebook right now, to let them know. But it'll be the tenth for the Yankee breakfast that they have, we'll be here for that as well, and then we'll be with Chamber on the sixteenth. So that's what we have planned so far.
And you said the sixteenth, where is the Chamber doing it?
At the park itself.
Again, at the park?
Yes, ma'am, it's, Christmas or, when is it, or?
Yeah, that's why, we have a few people calling.
The sixteenth is the, is the park thing.
Yeah, that's the Christmas, Christmas.
The same, the same, they're like, you're pretty similar to the park, yeah, yes, sir.
So, um, other than that, that's all I got.
If I could just piggyback off something, uh, real quick, and I know it's not in city limits, but with the solar farms coming in, I did talk to those people at the city council meeting, and they assured me that they were gonna supply our first responders with training on how to deal with emergency out there, so, so none of our people, as they're responding after the solar farm, they're gonna be getting electric tools or anything like that, if there's a fire, a solar farm, or something like that, so they assured us that they would, they assured me that they would provide training for our people. Uh, of course, we're talking two years down the road before anything's gonna be happening, but.
Is that the school board, or?
Yeah, I was, that, the school board is, I'm talking.
Um, actually, one more thing, I just, so we're having a lot of, just letting you know, this is security, we're getting a lot of activity behind the fire station. We don't have no lights back there, although, I know we're supposed to have a lot of them back at the fire station, it's been out. Um, we've got a camera system now, uh, we have some stuff off away from the station line as well. Um, our chemical trailer that's in the back, that we use for chemical response, as well as that little shed, we're getting people parked in that, in there at night, uh, that we've been catching them. So, I don't know if you can maybe get some of those light sticks or something, kind of put some light back there.
Did you hear that, Banks, about fixing the light? Okay.
I appreciate it. Take those two, uh, security lights, very security lights, that are in the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Any questions for the? Fire chief? Okay. Thirteen, City Manager comment?
I would, I would like to say that one of those responsible was at my parents' house this, this past, you know, so, they did a great job developing, you know, fire in the walls, and my parents were, especially my, it's funny, my dad wasn't, my mom was. Yeah, that kind of sad, about the whole deal, I mean, nothing was lost, they were able to, they had insurance and all that. But I would just like to say, you did a great job as far as showing up super fast and getting it all taken care of, and they appreciated it, and I, and I appreciate it, so.
Good deal.
Just would like to say that.
Very well.
No. Never said it, I thought it was gonna be around.
Uh, there's nothing, I mean, okay, City Manager comment?
Okay, as we as we're moving in, I have to report, so see that we finished this, this one with a boss of an eighty thousand dollar boss, that replaced the body, which we received from Texas, Colorado, refunding from, uh, split at, uh, last month, I think there's still like a fifty thousand dollars that we still have to receive from that grant. Uh, thirteen, your, uh, the pilots, of course, at four billion dollar rate, uh, that in the next two months, I, I send these, you can do it again for renewal, of course, I'll have to work those issues out, hopefully they'll be closer, four percent, and they'll go to half percent at that period of time. Uh, Splash Band project, as a refresher, is over there taking care of security fence, uh, it's also taking care of the barriers at the Indiana Fish Park, as it's moving forward, uh, completion of that project. Uh, the library should be in, uh, transportation apartment, of course, from the church building, back to their capital hall, uh, and, and they're working on that project. And, uh, I need to bring you up to that we do, we're operating right now with one water well. Um, well, number four, of course, we have all the internals out of it, going through the city, just exactly, we are, uh, on that instance, uh, it'll be another week before we come up with a game plan about, you know, just exactly what, what we're all in debt. And then there again, we're still waiting on parts and stuff like that for repair of the stair bike. I'm talking to you, it'll be January they're filming, before, uh, all the ample sheets and stuff to be able to repair it. Of course, as you drop by, eighty seven two, as you see where the first line says, that has been knocked down, we're making preparations to move far, from burn brush towns, and so that's, but that's, but we'll start fixing it too. And, uh, basically, that's all I have on my desk, is time for the rest of the stuff, of course.
Okay, on the deal, you got an update on the library project?
That's what I was.
They're moving, they're moving, I know you said that.
Okay.
That's supposed to be in the process of, eight, that's what I think.
Good deal, okay.
And it'll be out by January fourth. Because we, this year, just the third year, I'll tell you, they're carrying a church, uh, in, for the use of that building for this year. They have to, large plant trees and buildings that they want to have failed or out now, and taking off that lot and returning for, uh, that building for this year, so I'm working, trying to get estimates on what it's gonna take, to, to take those two pigeons down, because they're over a hundred foot tall. And with that, that's all I have.
Well, I put one more comment under yours, and that's just to inform, um, you all in the public, of course, we now have the online, uh, payments.
Say, yes, ma'am.
We will, uh, in the next month, be sending out to everybody in town.
Is the registration, you fix, as far as?
Yes, I mean, I fixed it.
Okay, so, so I can try again, but.
Yeah, try it again, but there's also an eight hundred number where you can call, and get, uh, your account information, and you can pay through the phone as well, but not with us, you have to call the eight hundred number. And of course, there is a three point seven percent fee, uh, but the fee's gonna stay there. The only thing we don't take is e-checks, uh, but debit and credit cards, yes. And they can come to the office as well, and we do it, we now have the terminals there, the credit card machines, where they can do it there, too.
You take that FTS? You take that FTS, crypto?
Oh, no.
Come on, come on. Okay, fourteen, action to pay pending bills?
No motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Neela, second by Councilman Soden, all in favor of motion, action to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Boskis, second by Councilman Soden, all in favor?
All right.
Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Get this, sir.
Yeah, I'll get so.